We're moving into a whole different vibe. It's our work session. Uh, we do have some rules, but they're not, not very many. Uh, Mr. Engel, you're going to be running the show.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Counsel, uh, this is our first budget discussion, uh, at the council level. A council meeting level, work session level of the year. Um, I think it's, um, uh, fantastic and a testament to the fact that we do, we are in a pretty good place as, uh, Donna shared. Uh, financially that we can actually start to talk about the budget. Uh, in April, if you'll recall last year, we had a compacted budget process that we piled everything into June and July. Because we just didn't know, uh, what effect COVID was going to have on our revenues. Uh, but we do feel comfortable enough that we believe that we can start to put the budget together and have a little bit more spaced out timelines so that we've got some time to digest these things. This is a work session. We're not asking for any formal approvals this evening. Uh, but, uh, this is the first budget discussion that we're having in, uh, as the council has made it since prior to my time here. CIP is the priority first, taking care of the streets. That is something that we're widely recognized by our residents and non-residents. Uh, for, for, uh, our focus and we're in, in an area that we excel in taking care of our infrastructure. So I think it's fantastic that this is the first thing that we do is we put our budget together. Uh, we had, we did have a tour, uh, for those that were able to attend. Uh, I hope that everyone was able to get their packet, the, the handful of folks that weren't able to be there. Um, and we're always, uh, available to answer these questions. The CIP is a five-year plan, but it's really five one-year plans. We're really just looking for approval eventually for the 2022 portion of it. But it is a, a living, breathing document. The things that are in those out years, things pop up, things disappear. Uh, so really what we're looking for is 2022. So, uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen with you. But the full CIP project sheets and the budget is in the, uh, in the packet. Um, this is going to be a high-level PowerPoint that really, uh, focuses on the 2022 projects. But it does address the full CIP in major, medium and minor projects. At the conclusion of that, we'll turn it over to Donna and Donna will cover the financials. And, uh, hopefully, uh, assure everyone that we can actually afford, uh, the, 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 the five-year CIP, which we can. We'll answer any questions and then, uh, we'll, we'll stand to adjourn at the conclusion of that. Uh, we will again come back with all this information for formal approval somewhere down the road. This is just our, our, I mean, we're pretty solid on what we're, we're recommending. But this is kind of the first opportunity that we can shoot this to the council, uh, and the public if the public is tuning in, wants to know what the CIP is. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, share my screen here. Everybody see that? Okay, so this is our 2022 to 2026 CIP work session. Um, we're going to jump into our major projects first. Uh, it's plural, but there's really only one major project in the CIP. And that is our Upper Turkey Creek. Uh, that is currently slated for 24, 25 and 26. Uh, these are updated costs. We just got these last week. So it's a forty-three point one million dollar project. Uh, the Merriam share is about six million dollars with two million dollars of in-kind easements. Uh, the county is committed to a little bit north of seven million and the federal ask is just a tad bit under twenty-eight. So it's about twenty-seven nine eighty-nine, I believe is the number. Uh, I actually did talk to a rep that called me from Representative Sharice David's office today. This afternoon I spoke to her. She wanted to clarify that these numbers, uh, we, when we initially submitted this project for an earmark about a month ago, we didn't have updated numbers. They were 2015 numbers. She was calling to, uh, see if we could get updated numbers and we magically had them because we just got them last week. So I was able to update her on those numbers, but she said that that is, uh, they're putting that project forward for appropriation. So again, a pretty exciting time, uh, as I've shared, uh, if this is going to happen, it's going to happen in the next 24 months. If it doesn't happen in the next 24 months, we'll have some other conversations. Uh, if it does happen, this clearly is going to shift some priorities within the CIP, which is okay. We've got a lot of focus on downtown, which I'll cover in a second. Uh, but, uh, this is, as it has for about the last 12 years, we just put in the last three years of the CIP and we just keep pushing it down the road in the hopes at some point in time it'll be funded. But, um, if it does get funded, we likely would still do it and it probably, we'd probably move it up a year, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, if for some reason it magically got funded. Um, but this is our major project that is in our CIP. We are holding six million dollars in our five-year plan to accommodate this project. Uh, our medium projects come next. So, uh, we just, you just approved, uh, engineering, a PSA for, uh, a fitness for West Frontage Road. This is, uh, as you can see, this is from the, uh, circle in the middle of Marion Point, just south of sixty-seventh, runs all the way down to Seventy-Fifth Street. Um, this is a project that also has been in the CIP for several years. And every time it came time to do this project, somebody decided they want, wanted to develop something new on sixty-seventh street and tear the streets up. And we didn't want to put a brand-new street in there just to have it be torn up. Uh, now that, uh, uh, Mr. Reed and his, uh, family have moved in and, uh, taken those two last spots at Marion Point. It's time to redo that street and give them a nice street, uh, out there, uh, on the frontage road. So this is a Turkey Creek Drive, which I don't think any of us, or at least most of us, didn't know Turkey Creek Drive was the street that's the roundabout and is to the, uh, east of the car dealerships. But it's from that roundabout to Seventy-Fifth Street. It's Mill and Overlay sidewalk connectivity, which is big. That's clearly something that we, uh, know needs to be done and needs to be, um, and it is additional scope. But it's clearly something that I think will be well-received. It's going to be some new curb and gutter, uh, the railroad crossing updates. Uh, our upgrades are going to be, they're going to be a pain. It's going to create a delay every time we work with the railroad it is. But kind of re, we're reworking that, uh, quiet zone. I think now's the time to do it. If we're in there, that's what we should be doing. And then again, that pedestrian break, bit, bridge over Turkey Creek just to the west of the concrete factory. I think it's just to the west. Uh, we do have, as Jim, uh, mentioned, we do have bridge deck and superstructure repairs from a biennial bridge inspection that we did not anticipate with this project when it was put in the CIP several years ago. But again, if we're in there, we're doing that. Now's the time to do it. Uh, this is funded out of the I-35 TIF, which is, uh, an allowable use. It supports the things, uh, the, the projects that are in the TIF, so it's an allowable use. And it's not on here, but we're also going to tackle the, uh, trailhead parking lot there on Seventy-Fifth Street across from Wendy's. Second twenty-two, uh, because this is a TIF project, it actually leaves us some money in 2022 in the quarter cent street and stormwater tax to do cars project. We are going to do Fifty-Fifth Street from Merriam Drive to Schweitzer. Uh, so this is, this picture is looking west on Fifty-Fifth Street. Uh, Merriam Drive would be behind you. Uh, this project's going to be, be a mill and overlay. We're going to fill in the sidewalk and curbs where they need. Uh, we've got some failing stormwater structures and pipes. We're going to replace the ones that we can replace. We're going to line the ones that we can line. Again, we line some of those things where we can because they minimize disruption. And all indications are thus far that they actually work, uh, just as well as putting a new pipe in. Uh, we're going to put some LED streetlights in, and this is a perfect candidate for bike lanes. Uh, well, we'll talk a little bit about bike study here in a second. This one is a no-brainer because, uh, this is Shawnee's, uh, bike, uh, route. Comes right across Fifty-Fifth Street to Schweitzer. So by putting a bike lane, uh, or some sort of bike facility on this street, we plug right into Shawnee. Uh, and can get over into that, that neck of the woods. So, uh, we think this is a perfect, uh, candidate for bike lanes. The, again, this comes out of our quarter cent special street stormwater sales tax. It's a cars project. So the total project costs two point six million dollars. Uh, about half of that is going to come from the county assisted road system program, which is county, county fund. So, uh, this is, those are your two 2022, uh, medium projects. So your medium project summary within the five-year CIP are the two projects at the top there in 2022. In 2023, we're, uh, we are going to, uh, uh, construct Merriam Drive from Johnson Drive to Fifty-Fifth. So kind of the downtown portion of Merriam Drive. Uh, in 2023, we will also do a drainage improvement from, uh, Fiftieth Terrace up by England Street down to Kessler. That's a drainage project, uh, where we have, uh, undersized pipes. Whereas neighborhoods grew, they put eighteen-inch pipes to thirty-six-inch pipes. And, you know, it just really wasn't a comprehensive, uh, drainage, um, system that was put up there. We have areas where in people's backyards, literally pipes daylight and then run through the yard and go into another, into another pipe underground. We need to go in there and clean all that up. The main reason that we're doing this is not necessarily, uh, it, in and of itself that it needs to be done. But in 2024, that next project down, we have a cars project, which is Forty-Ninth Street from Schweitzer Road to Antioch. That's a project, uh, that's a cars project. Uh, if we're going to go in there, we're going to tear that street up and we're going to put that street back, uh, for, you know, probably the last time we'll touch it for 20 years. Now's the time to do that drainage. It's the right thing to do. So that's why we're, uh, doing that drain. And that drainage is going to be covered by, uh, watershed slash smack funding. But in 2025, we're going to do Merriam Drive, the northern extent of it. So from Fifty-Fifth Street to Antioch. I think it's important to point out that Merriam Drive, Johnson to Fifty-Fifth and Merriam Drive Fifty-Fifth to Antioch. The current planning sustainable places grant that Brian had mentioned earlier, that will inform the design of those. So we put some funds in there, you know, we don't know exactly what the public and what that process is going to play out. But the, we anticipate being able to take that PSP and give that to the designers and say, this is the street profile we want. Whether that's a complete streets profile, whether that's bike lanes, whether that's on-street parking, whatever we get out of that. The reason that those are, uh, staggered the way they are is so that we can be, the design can be informed by the current PSP grants. Then we've got another street storm drainage improvements. It's over in the area of Sixtieth, Sixty-first and, uh, between Antioch and East City Limits. That'll be a 2025 project. And then our cars project in 2026 will be Mackey. I'm sorry, will be Johnson Drive from Mackey to East City Limits. Uh, you know, recognize that last year we did from Kessler to Mackey, the street surface. Uh, we are going to do the street surface from Mackey to East City Limits in 2026. Uh, I think it's important to point out, uh, and I think it's something that we should toot our own horn and we should be proud of. And we should make sure that, uh, Jenna, if she's on the line, that we should put out there in any way that we can. That other than the top project, which is our West Frontage Road, which is funded by TIF. All of these projects that we're doing in the five-year CIP will be leveraged against county funds. So you've got about nineteen million dollars worth of projects here and nine million of that is going to come from grants outside of the city. So when we, uh, when we did the quarter, a quarter cent sales tax initiative, we told our residents that what we do is we leverage those dollars and we turn those dollars into more dollars and we're continuing to do that. Uh, we're, we're, we're continuing that trend where we take what we have and we, we maximize it to its full potential. So again, almost twenty million dollars worth of projects here in the next five years and our medium projects. Uh, and half of it's coming from the county, which I think is fantastic. We should, we should all, uh, be proud of that. And our residents should be proud of that because that, that gets us a heck of a lot more, uh, with those dollars than we would otherwise. Any, any questions about our medium project summary? Uh, Mr. Silvers?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. Um, I was looking at the Fifty-Fifth Street project from Merriam Drive to the West City Limits. And I remember a couple of years ago, there, there was some work that was done around the, um, uh, entrance to the ITB Industry Solutions Building.
The creek project.
Um, I think we were taking the creek underground there. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. We took the creek underground and we actually ran it down past Hayes. And, and kind of back behind, uh, the, the car lot that's just to the south of Sonic and dumped it into the creek there. But yes, that was a big drainage project. Yes, sir.
So any, is any of the curb work or, um, any other work that was done in that area going to kind of be undone to do this project?
Yeah, uh, not by design. That's why we have, uh, the substandard sidewalk and curb replacement. So if we've got good curb or we've got good sidewalk specifically from that project, we're not going to replace it unless for some reason we have to to get to pipes that are underneath it or something else that are failing. Yeah, we, we have no intent of replacing, you know, six, seven-year-old, um, curb and sidewalk if we don't need to. Great question.
I knew you'd have a good answer that I would like to. Thank you.
Any, um, any other questions? I don't see anybody. So that's our 2022 to 2026 medium project summary. Uh, these are what we consider to be our minor projects. Uh, this is, uh, the city hall exterior improvement. Uh, this is really, um, to soften the outside, to give it a little bit more of an inviting feature, to put some green features in there. Uh, to create a little bit of a waiting area overflow for our court, uh, area. Uh, this was a project that was, uh, originally scheduled for 2022. Uh, this was in partnership with the art committee. So the art committee had art project, uh, funding that they wanted to partner with the city to upgrade and again soften city hall, uh, with the, uh, couple of million dollars that we had put into the police department expansion, the new community center across the street. Uh, the idea was that, you know, the city hall still has this loading dock kind of look to it, lots of concrete and nothing really soft about it. But of course, that was kind of how buildings were built back then. Uh, so the art, art committee, uh, pledged, uh, I believe a hundred thousand dollars towards this project. Uh, and we, uh, looked at in interior improvements and exterior improvements. These are only the exterior improvements. At some point down the road, we likely will put the interior improvements in there. But again, this was a 2020 project that we deferred due to COVID, uh, that we're pushing to 2022. So we, we believe that that budget's still going to be pretty close if it's, I mean, well, it's going to have to be because that's what we're asking for. Uh, comprehensive bike and trail plan study. Uh, we're doing a, we're going to do the, a bike and trail plan study this year. And then we're asking to put money in the budget for implementation placeholder in the out years, which are going to be twenty-two to twenty-six. So we don't have any on-street bike lanes as we're reminded on a pretty regular basis. Um, this study is going to help us strategically plan for the future of where, where do bike, I mean, we will, this project process will involve people that are on bikes. This will be, they, the consultants will bike the streets. We need to have a comprehensive plan. So when we come up for Mill and Overlay or complete street redesign, we know where we should or shouldn't have these bike lanes. So the way that we would anticipate this line item working is we're currently doing, uh, the, the plan this year. Uh, what we've done is we've put money in the out years, twenty-two through twenty-six, and those funds will be spent probably one of the following ways. Either we will take those funds and go, okay, here's a street that doesn't require any sort of geometric change. It doesn't require us to do anything, but we could put some sharos on it or we could put some pavement markings or something like that. We would use, we could use the funds in any given year to implement that. But we could also use that like we use the street with that, those, that funding as we would use the streetlight or sidewalk or small drainage funds. Where we go in and we're doing a street project and that street project should have bike lanes on it. We can tap this, this funding source to pay for those. So, you know, we have projects where to us, it looks like, from a budgetary standpoint, it looks like five projects. It's us, it's a sidewalk project, it's a streetlight project, it's a drainage project and it's a Mill and Overlay. To the public, that's one project. To us, it looks like four projects. We try to do all that at once. So we would tap this funding in a very similar way. If, if, if there's a street that we're redoing, now's the time to do it. We clearly have heard loud and clear that this is something that is a priority, uh, and we need to be focusing on this. So we would tap that funding, uh, to basically supplement a Mill and Overlay budget. Or if we were doing a drainage, I mean, whatever other project, when we're in that neck of the woods and we have the bike plan that says we should have bike, uh, lanes on that street, that's what we're going to use this funding for. Downtown revitalization. So this is a new project also to put in 2022. Uh, these are some pictures of downtown, kind of historic downtown. Uh, but downtown really we're, we're calling historic downtown would be really from Johnson Drive on Merriam Drive north to the south end of the bus lots or the creek. Then you've kind of got industrial downtown, which would be north of that to Antioch. So what we're calling downtown revitalization is what we've, you know, uh, over the last several years through our 2040 plan, through the fifty-seven oh one, through our surveys, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're clearly getting the message that the public would like us to pivot and pay more attention, uh, to revitalizing downtown. We have two PSP grants that are covering Merriam Drive. Uh, we have a fifty-seven oh one plan, we've, which I think has great recommendations in it. That, uh, was a citizen-led committee that again has some recommendations for how we could invest in fifty-seven oh one. I think if we're going to revitalize downtown, I've said this before, I think we have to be the catalyst. We have to do something down there and indicate to our business community, but any potential future business community that we have not abandoned downtown. We want a vibrant downtown. We want our businesses that are there to thrive. We want new businesses to feel welcome if they want to come to downtown. We want to make it a place, again, uh, we want to make downtown a great place. Eventually, somewhere down the road, a great place to work, live and play. Uh, and we have to be the ones that really kind of set the tone for that in downtown. And we're, we're, uh, this is kind of an add-on budget to things that are already in place. So I'm going to come back to this, but I want to go forward a slide so we can kind of see, uh, in the context of what our pivot to downtown really looks like. So if you take that downtown revitalization out, uh, and we just look at these other projects that are in the CIP. We've got a cars project from John, from, um, um, Merriam Drive from Johnson to Fifty-Fifth. We've got a cars project from Fifty-Fifth to Antioch on Merriam Drive. We've got a Mill and Overlay of downtown and then we've got Upper Turkey Creek. So what, what we've done is we've overlaid this downtown revitalization budget over the top of that. And so seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty-one this year is what's, is approximately what the PSP grants are costing us. What we get out of that PSP process is going to help inform the design of the cars project, the next line down that will occur in 2022 for construction in 2023. And then so, and then in 2024, we will also use the PSP, uh, design guidelines that we get to design the northern end of Merriam Drive. What you'll see is we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-five. That's really just implementation money. What that could be is we might get out of the PSP grant that we need to acquire some property. We need to acquire some right-of-way. There might be, uh, additional studies. There might be something where, um, it's not part, it ends up not being asked for in the cars budget, but we might something, we might want something like a, a transit stop. We might want something, uh, that, that, you know, that really is, we want to be able to track as being, this is a downtown expenditure to enhance downtown. So that's what the two hundred fifty thousand dollars in, are in there. The eight hundred thousand dollars in 2024 is for the implementation of the fifty-seven oh one study. Now, whether that, uh, is the implementation, well, I think that that's a great, I think you had, we had a great process. I think that's a great plan. Um, we have some time to decide, do we want exactly that? Would we like to reconvene the committee and kind of tweak that? It gives us some time, but at some point in time, we have to put that money in the budget. If we're going to commit to, uh, if we're going to ask residents to get together and put, put their heads together and have public process um, to help us revitalize downtown, I don't think we should put that, that, uh, study on the shelf and just let it get dusty. We need to implement it at some point in time. That eight hundred thousand dollars is from the fifty-seven oh one budget for the selected option that the committee and the public chose. That is what the budget is, absent doing anything with the existing, well, at the time, the existing community center. We have already removed that building. So this should implement the plan in the absence of having to remove the building because it's already gone. Again, um, none of this budget that is in here, uh, would be spent without, uh, council approval. But I think basically the rundown is, is we're doing PSP in 2021. In 2022, we're going to help implement that with two hundred fifty thousand dollars, whether that's additional design work, right-of-way acquisition, whatever it is. So that we can design the cars project in downtown for twenty-three. Once that's done, we're going to roll in there in 2024, upgrade fifty-seven oh one. We're going to do the northern part of Merriam Drive in 2025. Then in 2026, we're going to do a complete Mill and Overlay of all the streets in downtown. And we, and there's, there's your five-year plan. There's your pivot to downtown. We're able to do all of these things without any sort of a tax increase. These are within our existing budgets and it answers the, um, it answers the, the, the question or at least it, it helps address what we're hearing and that's that we need to be spending more time downtown, uh, at least in, in our design. So that's what this is. That's what this downtown revitalization is. Uh, where we've got placeholders for implementation and then fifty-seven oh one is the only kind of hard thing that's in there. And it's in 2024 because that's actually a lull downtown between the two legs of Merriam Drive that we'll be doing.
And Chris, Mr. Neal has a question.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Can't see you on there.
No, I just, I, I just wanted to, uh, say, to make a comment and say how, um, and draw attention to the fact that, um, the news that you just brought with the, uh, the, uh, information from Representative David's office about, uh, push, putting this, putting the Upper Turkey Creek flood control project forward also is significant and should be a significant sort of, um, hopeful sign that, uh, you know, because that will change a lot of things, will potentially allow the businesses down there the flexibility to expand and grow if that project moves forward. And, uh, currently the buildings can't be significantly changed, um, due to the flood, flood ish, issues. And so, so I, I just am excited to hear that after having essentially been beating the drum and every time I go to DC for the last three years, uh, and so I'm, I'm excited for that. And I just wanted to draw the, the circle around the fact that all of this together, what might create a really great synergy um, for the, for our downtown. And so I'm excited to hear that. Thank you for bringing that information out today. Thank you.
So here, here's our, again, our, our downtown. This is kind of the, the downtown map, the financial map for the next, uh, five years, which I think is important, uh, just to kind of see that we actually, what, what, the, the residents that want us to do these things, they, they, they've clearly been hurt. Uh, so here's our 2022 to 2026 minor project summary. So our comprehensive bike and trail plan study and implementation, our downtown revitalization. Uh, the traffic signal protective permissive left turn phasing, essentially what that is, is, uh, we have, we've heard, uh, on several occasions that there are people that sit at lights wanting to go left and the light is red. Uh, and there's no one on incoming, on, oncoming, uh, traffic. And are there ways that we can redo the phasing, do a traffic study and perhaps upgrade any of the equipment so to allow for that? So we're, we're essentially putting, uh, money in each year to do a study and then potential implementation. Some intersections, we're not going to be able to do that. There's, you know, they, you can't cut across three lanes of traffic with a, with a left turn when you've got oncoming traffic. But are, there are areas around town where we can do that. So again, just enhancing the flow of traffic, uh, keeps cars from idling. It's good for the environment. But it also just gets people where they're going a little bit faster, a little bit more effectively. Our city hall exterior improvements in 2022 and then our annual programs. So we've got our small drainage projects. We've got our sidewalks, mate, sidewalk maintenance repair program. Uh, we've got our residential streetlight and we've got then project admin, uh, administration, which essentially just pays our CIP staff out of the CIP. So, um, again, this is our 2022 construction summary. Uh, the five-year CIP is really five one-year plans. We kind of look at them as five years. So we understand that we're doing things comprehensively, but really we're looking for approval. And the approval that council eventually gives us is just for one year and that will be for 2022. The construction summary would be West Frontage Road improvements. That's TIF project. Fifty-fifth Street is our cars. City Hall exterior improvement, the sidewalk maintenance program, small drainage projects. And then you've got your Mill and Overlay and then we do have this one U-Bass, uh, which is essentially like a one-inch Mill and Overlay that Overland Park is doing on Lowell. Lowell is, uh, our east border, uh, that we share with Overland Park. On Lowell, we actually, Merriam is the homes. But the whole street, as opposed to a center line, the whole street is Overland Park. So they're doing the street. But because they're our residents, we're going to go fifty-fifty with them. But they, they use a little bit different type of, uh, resurfacing than we do. So we're going to go fifty-fifty with them next year to redo Lowell so the folks on Lowell can get a new street. Uh, that is our 2022 construction summary. In terms of construction, again, we do have some of these other smaller accounts. We're going to have bike implementation and things like that, but those are kind of, those are up to appropriation from the council. Uh, assuming that we can come forward with things that make sense to use those funds for. But here's your construction for 2022. I, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about projects, um, before I turn it over to Donna and let her share with you the financials.
Any questions at this point? Okay, ready. Keep going.
Thank you.
Okay, much as Chris said, um, it's wonderful and great to have a plan. But if you're not able to pay for it, it doesn't do anything. And so really, uh, we take, uh, it's my job to take all of these great plans and put them into a forecast and see where we end up at the end of the day. So whenever I forecast the five-year CIP, I first look at the general fund and what are the, uh, revenues that are coming in? Are they, uh, what are we anticipating will happen over the next five years? What are our expenditures? Are there, is there anything unusual going on there? And from that, we formulate how much we can transfer from the general fund over to the CIP, which is a very important revenue to the CIP. Um, we also look at how much are payments on the, the bonds that we have outstanding because of course we consider those, making those payments a very high priority. Uh, and we look at how much of that bond payment is going to be paid by our um debt service property tax levy? How much of it's going to be paid for by the one-eight cent sales tax that we pass to fund the construction of the um community center? And how much is the CIP going to have to do? Lastly, we look at what the CIP costs and then uh what other funding do we have available for the CIP? And that CIP funding is really um, half of the one cent sales up to half of the one cent city sales tax goes over there. We have the quarter cent city sales tax for the streets and stormwater. Um, we put the city share of the Johnson County courthouse sales tax into our CIP. Then we get grants from um as many entities as possible from the county, state or federal government. And then if a project happens to fall within the Tiff boundaries and um qualifies for Tiff funding, then we'll also utilize those Tiff funds. And as Chris was saying shortly ago, the west uh frontage road project that's in the plan right now qualifies for that. We then kind of put that into a forecast, calculate our revenues, look at where we're going to spend our money by project type. And we um get to a fund balance for each of those years. Um, we are, um, we started off this year with a fund balance in the CIP fund of about sixteen point four million dollars. If all goes exactly as forecasted, we will end up with eleven million, which is still a very healthy fund balance. Especially when you're talking, um, you know, five and a half years in advance. We all know how um, whenever you forecast the weather, usually, you know, it's only so, so accurate even a week away. And I think financial forecasting, when you're looking five years in advance is also sometimes challenging. Nevertheless, that's a good balance. The breakout of that is um, those revenues that we collect for the street in storm, stormwater sales tax. We can only spend on street and stormwater sales tax. So it's important to notice how much of the fund balance is there and how much of it is in general projects? Money that we can use on any projects because they just come from city sources. So we can see that, uh, again, we started at a little over sixteen million. In some of the early years, it grows. That's because we don't have as many projects going on. But again, as we talked about in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, we have that er, Upper Turkey Creek project. That's almost two million a year those years. And so that kind of brings the fund balance down. But still a good, healthy fund balance to end up with. Expenditures, um, this has a lot of information on it. I, you know, I think maybe it brings, it lists out all the projects and kind of has a nice subtotal by project type. I like the next graphic. I think it really uh maybe better depicts what's going on per year. We can see that bottom dark, darkest blue is your general projects. You can see just above that is your maintenance-type projects like your mill and overlay, your um sidewalk maintenance, your small drainage projects. And then you see the lightest blue, Upper Turkey Creek is in your last three years. And so all three of those blue boxes are getting paid for out of general, the general fund balance. Which again, goes back to, we saw that decrease in that fund balance. Then we have the street and stormwater projects, which are also funded by cars revenue. And then lastly, in twenty-one and twenty-two, we have some Tiff expenditures. One of the pieces of the puzzle we also talked about was how is the debt service being paid? Um, in twenty twenty-two, we're forecasting that about two hundred thousand will come from the property tax levy. A little over two million from the quarter cent uh facility sales tax. And then a million from CIP. And um, that's actually a really positive sign. At one point, we were thinking that it was going to be one point two million per year for several years. But we've dropped it below that a few, a year or two sooner than we had originally projected. So that's good news. And so I would be more than happy to answer any questions if anyone has any about the finances.
Well, I, I think, if, if I could, if I could just, uh, could you go back a slide, Donna? I think it's also um, a, a pretty good sign that we will be expiring debt in twenty twenty-three. So we will, so our refining, we, our refinancing in twenty twenty-three, that, well, the twenty twelve refinancing will fall off in twenty twenty-three. So in twenty twenty-four, we actually, that number shrinks from the CIP. That's another reason that we have some increased balances. Is, is, is that correct?
Yes and no. It is true that that drops off. However, the way that the uh, the debt service schedule was staged, the amount that we pay in principal actually goes up some once that drops off. So, so we don't see a lowering of the payment per se, but.
Thank you.
The more we can pay off, the better.
Yeah, we have less debt. We just, yeah, we just.
Yeah.
Uh, Bob, have you got a question?
Yes, this is Bob Pape. Uh, yeah, Donna, you, I, you had indicated on there, and I think it's from my recollection, it's about half. But you indicated we'd get up to half of the one percent sales tax can go to CIP. What is that number for twenty twenty-two? Is that thirty percent of it? Are, are we at half or how close to half are we?
For uh, for twenty twenty-two, we would be at thirty-seven and a half percent is what we're forecasting right now.
Thirty-seven and a half percent. That, that's.
Right. As numbers come in and things get closer, then we can give you um, you know, an updated number. But right now, instead of fifty percent, it would be thirty-seven and a half percent.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Okay.
Well, and just one last kind of slide. Uh, you know, the program is a plan. And as Chris said, really only the twenty twenty-two portion of it goes into the um, the CIP. And so every year, we're going to update this and every year we can uh adjust it based on our current needs. Any feedback that uh you can give us between now and when we adopt the budget? We can certainly incorporate into the, the final plan. Um, and approval of this will occur with the twenty twenty-two budget. So certainly, we're not asking for any kind of overall adoption tonight.
Very good. Mr. Engel, do you have anything further?
I don't, other than just to say uh again, how rare and special it is that we as a city address CIP first. Um, that, and I, again, I can't say it enough. I, you know, you know, I love those surveys and what those surveys tell us. But it clearly is noticed by our residents. Our residents do not wonder where these dollars go. Because they're clearly evident that we are taking care of the things that we're supposed to be taking care of, and that's our infrastructure. And I think that the council's commitment for, again, predating me to do this at the beginning of the budget cycle um is, is the main reason we do this. You know, again, in all the other places I've ever uh worked at, um, we do the general fund, we pay all those other things. And whatever's left over, we'll do some street projects. And I think you find that when you go to other streets, which is why everyone's behind on streets, behind on stormwater. They don't have enough money to take care of their streets. I mean, look at some of our neighboring communities, which are nice communities, but they just don't have the, the same infrastructure uh standards that we do. Uh, and again, I thank you and appreciate the fact that we do that because it really is one of our primary functions in local governments, take care of our infrastructure. So uh, again, slap yourself on the back, slap yourself a high five. Uh, it's very expensive, but it is uh, it, it's, it's what we're supposed to be doing. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we adjourn? Well, thanks to you, Whitney. You got one?
I just want to say I thought uh Friday was great. Thank you. And I think this plan is exciting because I think it, it takes a lot of the things that constituents have been talking about, that we hear about a lot and shows that you take them seriously and that you um pivot as fast as government allows to do. Which is faster in Miriam than other places, but not as fast as people would often like. Um, but it was really encouraging to hear that amount of millions going into downtown and, and being able to tell people that that's part of the plan. I think that's great. So thank you.
Very good. I was going to mention that, uh, this, all the things that we've been talking about tonight came about because of the hard work the staff put into it. And it's a, this is a tradition. This is something that, if this was ten years ago, we'd be having a similar talk that we're having right now. This is something that's worked for us, but if we don't have competent staff to make it happen, it's just not going to happen. Um, and appreciate Chris and what you do and, and Donna and Jim and everybody else, Brian, anybody that had an input in this. It's, it's very helpful for us as a council to decide, I think, whether we're not, whether we're doing the right thing or not. You make our jobs a lot easier in that respect. So anything else for the good of the order? Well, then I guess since this is an official meeting, we'll just have to say goodbye then. And have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.